Well, we've had our walk-up song, so we will go ahead and get ourselves started. I would like to welcome you to this Monday, September 11th, 2023 session of the Carmel Clay School Board. Role call Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam President. Everyone is here in a calm and tranquil.
Thank you. Tonight, I want to start a little differently than normal. Today, as we gather on this solemn day of September 11th, we're reminded of the profound importance of education in understanding and commemorating the events of 22 years ago. It's an honor to stand before U.S. President of the Board to reflect on that day and the role public education plays in preserving the memory of that fateful day. Like many of you, I remember where I was on September 11th, 2001. I was in 11th grade, attending U.S. History. I recall when a teacher rushed in instructing us to turn on the television. As the only classroom in the building that had a standard TV that didn't come rolling in on a cart, it was definitely something that was different. We witnessed the plane striking the second tower live. Time seemed to halt, and at just 16, I recognized that the world was forever different. In that classroom, on that day, history was not a distant subject. It was an unfolding reality and became evident that history is not only contained to textbooks. It shapes our lives and future in real time. While it doesn't seem like this was very long ago, to put it in perspective, at this moment, our current senior class of 2024 wouldn't be born for another five years. Today, as we remember, we must recognize that education is about comprehending our past, learning from it, and building a better future for those who are the future. Since 9/11, our world has undergone profound changes, and education equips our youth to navigate these complexities. A key lesson from that tragic day is a heroism displayed by first responders, passengers on Flight 93, and those who rushed into burning buildings. They exemplified the domino spirit of our nation. By sharing their stories, we highlight unity, resilience, and we honor their bravery. Education also teaches us about the diverse fabric of our society. As 9/11 affected people from all backgrounds all over the world, it is our duty to foster an environment where diversity and inclusion are fundamental principles that unite us, not pull us away. By learning about each other, we build bridges of understanding. As we commemorate this day, let us remember the victims and their families. Let us honor the brave men and women who responded to the crisis with unwavering resolve, and let us reaffirm our commitment to education as a means to cultivate empathy, tolerance, and a sense of shared responsibility. In our classrooms, we have the power to shape future generations, instilling such things of peace, compassion, unity. We equip them with knowledge and critical thinking skills to navigate our complex world, reminding them that we can prevent such tragedies from happening again. So as we pause today to remember the events of September 11th, let us also rededicate ourselves to the pursuit of knowledge and to the principles of unity, tolerance, and justice. Let us honor the memory of those we lost by ensuring that our schools remain a beacon of hope in our society. Thank you for being here tonight, and may we never forget the lessons of September 11th, 2001. Please rise and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance and for a moment of silence afterwards. Now, ever fitting, we have a district spotlight on excellence, where we have Mrs. McDaniel, who will be presenting to us. Good evening, board members, superintendents, and honored guests. I'm Karen McDaniel. I'm the Associate Principal at Carmel High School, and I am very excited tonight to introduce you to, if you haven't met them already, Ben Boyce and Liam, oh my gosh, Liam, Hanson. I've been, yes, Hanson. Apologies. These two young men did some amazing nonpartisanship work on Thursday, September the 7th, at Carmel High School. During SSRT and during our lunches, they held a voter registration drive, where they were able to get 21 seniors to sign up for registration to be a voter. I would love to bring both of these young men up, because Ben and Liam both have just shown so much leadership at Carmel High School. I'd love for you to come up, and then Ben, I'd love for you to tell us a little bit about why we did this.
Yeah, so currently in Carmel, there's a youth voter turnout problem. So just going back to some statistics, back in the 2019 municipal elections, in the age group from 18 to 24, 2% of those who were registered in that age group showed up to vote, and that number rose a little bit in the 2022 midterms. 24% of people who were ages 18 through 24 and registered to vote showed up. So currently, there's just, you know, a problem with youth showing up to the polls. Indiana currently has the third lowest rate of youth voter participation out of any state in the entire country. So it's just something that, you know, Liam and I were trying to, on a nonpartisan basis, just encourage more young people to go to the polls and exercise their civic duty.
What club are you, uh, which are you in?
So, yeah, I'm actually, so I'm a member of the Young Democrats Club at Carmel High School. And, yeah.
Yeah, I'm the president of Carmel Republicans.
We were so proud of the work that they did, and we talked tonight.
Yeah, go ahead.
We were just talking before. What we're going to go back tomorrow and do as a group is, I can pull that data in our system to see where we have some to-be-turning-18 students as seniors before November 7th. And then as a school, what we can do is we can get the message that they have for us with the links. Of course, they have links to websites where students can go, and we can push out a message in Canvas to those students that have yet to turn 18 before November 7th. Kind of embarrassed we didn't do that before. We're going to do it after tonight. So really proud of Liam and Ben. Thank you, guys.
Sorry, can't help myself, but I'm really proud of you guys. And for you guys to get together, I'm guessing that your, your kind of positions on a lot of things in the world are very opposite. So why, why come together for this?
I mean, first and foremost, like he said, our numbers were, oh, sorry, yeah. Yeah, I would say firstly, I mean, with some of the stats that Ben gave, it's, it's an issue that's bigger than parties. It's definitely like a generational thing that we're going to have to get younger generations to vote, and that's always been a problem. And we both, we're actually both working for candidates that are running for office right now, and they both, I can tell you, both sides want to see as much youth participation as possible. And so, you know, although it's not an issue that has to deal with parties, both sides also want it as well. So that's part of the reason we did it.
Well, I just want to say that when I heard this story, I thought, we gotta, we gotta bring these guys here and talk about it, because what a great example you guys have set for your peers, and to try to see a problem and try to solve it in a positive way and by working together. But also, I think you set a great example for the grownups, because we can learn from, from your example that, you know, the way our system works the best is when everybody participates, and together we can do that very well. So thank you very much.
Sure.
Another round of applause for these fine young gentlemen. And as much as we would love for you to stay, you are more than welcome to. I do know it's a school night, and if you don't have any homework, I'm sure your parents can find some chores for you to do. So, thank you. All right, we don't have any public comment tonight, so we will move on to our consent items. Do I have a motion to approve consent?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Greg. All those, oh, questions, comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Okay. We will now move on to our public hearing. At this time, I will suspend the regular board meeting and open a separate public hearing to allow for public input regarding the proposed consideration to enter into one or more leases with the building corporation, which would permit the building corporation to issue its first mortgage bonds. This is the second of two hearings on this topic. Mr. Michael, would you like to make any comments regarding these plans before we invite members of the public to offer input?
I would. I have a rather long narrative that I need to read, which I read at the first public meeting, and so I'll need to do that again. So just bear with me, and I'll, I'll read through it. So notices of public hearings have been previously published to permit the Board to conduct public hearings in conjunction with its consideration of the issuance of general obligation bonds and/or entering into one or more leases with a building corporation, which would permit the building corporation to issue its first mortgage bond. The proceeds of such general obligation bonds or first mortgage bonds would be used to pay for the cost of all or any portion of certain renovations and miscellaneous facility improvements at Carmel High School, Creekside Middle School, Carmel Middle School, and Cherry Tree Elementary School, certain technology improvements and upgrades, and all projects related to any of the foregoing projects as further described. Indiana law requires that the Board conduct two public hearings prior to considering adoption of a resolution preliminarily determining to issue general obligation bonds or enter into a lease or leases for certain controlled projects. The first hearing was held on August the 28th. Tonight, the Board will conduct the second hearing. The law requires that the following information be made available to the public at each hearing. The 2024 facility project for which the Board is considering issuing general obligation bonds or entering into one or more leases consists of all or any portion of certain renovations and miscellaneous facility improvements at Cherry Tree Elementary School, including but not limited to improvements consisting of major renovations throughout Cherry Tree Elementary School, including without limitation replacement of mechanical systems, repainting, replacement of carpet and other finishes, and major programmatic renovations to reconfigure student learning spaces, particularly providing expanded learning spaces, including an enlarged large group instruction space and a renovation of the library media center to remove an existing loft, which will provide for a new maker space and an improved learning space dedicated to STEAM concepts, and expanded space to accommodate the staff who now support student learning and renovation of the main entrance and office spaces to improve functionality and provide greater security at the main entrance. Certain renovations and miscellaneous facility improvements at Carmel High School stadium, including major renovations throughout the facility, major programmatic renovations to support the current programs which utilize the stadium, and expansion of the home side portion of the stadium to accommodate improved and expanded spaces to accommodate the growing, growth of programming that utilized such spaces, and improvements to the high school building and surrounding areas to include repair or replacement of the cooling tower, installation of LED lighting in the legacy gym, repair or replacement of concrete curbs and sidewalks, and interior signage improvements. Certain renovations and miscellaneous facility improvements at Creekside Middle School, including but not limited to improvements consisting of paving repair and resurfacing, concrete repair, and improvements, signage improvements, repair or replacement of parking lot lighting, and landscape renovations and improvements. Certain renovations and miscellaneous facility improvements at Carmel Middle School, including but not limited to improvements consisting of improvements and renovations to the intense emotional development area, repairs to the auditorium roof, and repair of exterior brick, concrete curbs, and sidewalks, technology devices, laptops for students and staff, network equipment, and various classroom technology equipment such as projectors and maximum principal amount of the bonds is $71,500,000. Maximum term of the bonds and lease, lease for bonds, it's 15 years. Lease term is 17 years. Estimated interest rate on the bonds is 5.5%. Estimated total interest cost for the bonds is $43,177,185. If the Board adopts a resolution making a preliminary determination following the second public hearing on September the 11th, a notice of that determination would be published, and property owners or registered voters would have 30 days following the publication, publication to file a petition requesting the application of the local public question process for the proposed bonds and/or lease. The school corporation's current debt service levy is $31,447,442, and the current debt service rate, which is .3120 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. The estimated increase if the bonds are issued and a lease is entered into by the school corporation to the debt service levy is $18,500,000, and the tax rate is .1701 cents per $100 of assessed value. However, as existing obligations mature, the anticipated net increase to the debt service fund tax rate is expected to be zero. And I'll refer you to the attached slide for debt service levy and tax rate estimates over the next 10 years. The percent of the school corporation's current and projected debt service payments divided by the net assessed value of the taxable property within the school corporation, referred to as the net assessed value, is approximately .35%. The percent of the school corporation's outstanding long-term debt, coupled with the outstanding long-term debt of other taxing units located within the school corporation, divided by the net assessed value, is approximately 12.25%. And with that, it now would be opportunity for public comment.
Thank you. At this time, we'll offer members of the public an opportunity to make comments regarding these plans. If anyone would like to speak, just please come up to the podium right here. If there's no comments from members of the public, I will now close the hearing. We will now move on to our workshop topic of the evening, presentation of the 2024 budgets. Mr. McMichael, it is your time to shine.
Okay, let me get this far up.
Twice.
Twice.
Twice. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, how do I get rid of this? Okay, the rest, the rest of this will be easy. Okay, I'll begin by noting that the school district has five major funds, and by that I mean, these are the five funds that are supported by a tax rate. We have multiple funds, but these are by far the largest of our funds. You can see here that our education fund, the budget for that is set at $107,960,000. It's our primary fund, as the name implies. It's, that's where the, almost all of our teaching staff are paid, and other, what we'd call direct in the classroom or direct out at the school. As in the education fund, as the Board is quite aware, we also have additional support for that effort with our local operating referendum. And then we have an operations fund, which is a second major fund that every school district has, and that's to provide for transportation, bus replacement, capital projects, repairs and maintenance, and also purchase of buses. It's, there were three prior funds that were consolidated into this one operations fund. And I'm going to point out later, but I want to, you'll, you'll note that this fund is now $51 million, and that's, if you were to check, that's about 15,000 or 17,000 million more than it was previously, and that's due to a transfer that we're going to make this year. And, and I'll speak to one of that in just a minute. And then, then we have the debt service fund, which is for bond-related obligations, and then finally, our, our school safety referendum. So we're showing a total budgets of $232,325,612. And then I'll begin by reviewing the education and referendum fund, and as we've, we've consistently done, we combine these two because they're really for the same purpose. And so, we have projected revenue of, of just over $135 million. I'd point out that this is based on the state formula, which is, we're, right now, we're using a decrease of 69 students for this year, and a, and a decrease of 75 students next year. And of course, we haven't had to count on either one of those, but we're far enough into the school year where, where we're getting pretty comfortable that, that the, the count now is pretty close. There's always the, kind of the final count and cleanup, but, but we think, and this is actually a little better than what we earlier thought, so that's, that's always good. And then you can see the referendum increase as well, of $1.7 million. And so, and, and so I'd point out here on the graph that, that 19% of our, our total funds is, is the referendum, and, which is, we've stated that many times in the past. And here are the expenditures, and for, so this is a, our budgets are calendar year, but our funding for the education fund is on a fiscal year. So, so the, the state change, when they changed funding and started providing funding for the education fund, and property taxes, and include, used to be included as part of that funding, but now it's not, but the, but the, the schedule for the budget remains on a calendar year as it did, which works really good for the other funds, because property tax is paid per year. And we can manage this, but you'll see, that's why we show two years of salaries, because it's, the, the calendar year budget is a combination of those two. And you'll, you'll note that we've assumed 3% salary schedule increase plus increment in the first year and 1% in the second year, and the Board's acted on that for all employees except for teachers, which we're about to formally begin that collective bargaining process with them. And then you'll see that our benefits, our health insurance is up 7% this year. That's a couple percent higher than what we've had, but still about half of the, of the general trend on healthcare. And then, and we're assuming 5% next year, and then a 3% increase in, in not, non-personnel expense. So I'd point out that you can see that 96% of all of our expenditures here are for salary and benefits. So clearly, we're, you know, we are in the people business, and that's where we spend our money. And then this is projected cash balance, and so we began this year at $8.9 million in these two funds. And, and if we go down to the projected cash balance of 8.5, almost 8.6 million at the end of this calendar year, and then if we go clear to the bottom, we were projecting 8.75, the cash balance, less expenses in, by December of '24. Now, generally, what happens is, is when, when we build a budget, we'll be conservative on revenue, because of course, we don't want to assume we have money that doesn't show up. And we'll be a little more liberal on expenses, because we don't spend it unless we need to. But as you know, the, we have to have addition, we have to have appropriation in order to spend the money. So, so it's not a huge effort to come back and, usually in the fall, and we'll probably do it this fall, but, and ask for additional appropriation, but, but it's just kind of going through the process twice. So, so, and the other thing is, is when we show expenses, we're treating this as though the entire budget will be spent, and it, and it never is, because when we get to December, any, any purchase orders are out. It's not a lot, but, but it, in the context of the size of the budget, but there will be some outstanding encumbrances, we call it. So it's setting the money, it's like writing your checkbook, and your checkbook has a lower balance than your bank, because the check hasn't cleared the bank yet. So that's, that's kind of how that works. And so we're, of course, this is really showing a, you know, a stable, fiscally stable situation, which is what you should expect, and certainly what we expect. So the next fund then is the operations fund, and here, you'll see revenues 50, 51.4 million, and, and it is based on property tax and excise tax. But, but what's changed this year is you'll see the last thing, the transfer from the education fund, and, and that's, that's about 17, I believe it's $17.7 million. And so we've had some previous discussions about this as we got into the referendum renewal and discussing the referendum. And, and the first year of the education fund, and the first, and the first year of the operations fund, we were faced with a situation where the new education fund is much more restrictive than the general fund was, its predecessor. And so that general fund had, at that time, had about $16 million worth of operational expenses, things like some, you know, utilities, custodial services, some, some maintenance costs and so forth. All of those could not be paid, going forward, could not be paid from the education fund. So the first year, like probably almost every other school district, we transferred those expense, because the only other choice is the operations fund, of course. So we transferred the expense to the operation fund, and we also transferred the money to pay for it, because we didn't get any more money in that fund. We just, it, it was just, we could not pay those expenses, and, and the expenses were there. They're not new expenses, but they had to be paid from the operations fund, or at least not from the education fund. In the second year of, of having an education fund, we, we elected, I elected to make a transfer of those expenses to our referendum fund, because it remains a broader use potential than, than what, you know, the education fund. So we did that, but in, and then just this year, actually. So that's, we've done that for the last four or five years. And, but this year, there, there was some citizens that I, that, that reviewed our budget for the operations fund, operating referendum, and they noted these, these operational expenses. Well, of course, we have said repeatedly that we're, this money is what's, is helping to supplement, support our, our teachers, not our custodians. And so naturally, that, I was glad they did check this, because I welcome any questions about what we're doing, and you, you might notice I don't mind trying to share information about finances. So, so that was a good thing, but it, and it also alerted us that, you know, we, we're going to go back to the transfer process, because if somebody does review those budgets, and they're on our website, of course, then they're going to have those questions, and we don't want to want to take any chance that somebody would feel misled and so forth. So that's why this is, we're doing this, we're going back to the transfer concept, doesn't change anything other than how we present this from, in our official record, you know, bookkeeping and so forth. Yes. A good point. Dr. Versen is reminding me that when the education fund came out, the kind of the rules for the referendum were different then, and really what's changed is this last session. Now, when you either have a referendum, or in our case, attempting to renew the referendum, you have to be very specific as to what you're going to spend the money on. And so, and so, we, of course, we're very specific, and we specifically said, it was a little longer than this, but basically, when you read it, it's saying, we will spend the money on instructional staff, and indeed, we will. And so that was, so with the current language, we would not use the referendum for that reason alone, because besides it being confusing, that's, you know, we don't want to have anybody be misled by that. So that, this referendum will be spent on, really, on teacher salaries and benefits. And so that, you know, hasn't changed. Keep in mind that before, when we were doing the transfer, it left the fifteen, or sixteen million in the education fund, so indeed, the referendum has always supported, you know, teacher salaries and benefits, but the way it was being presented was no doubt confusing if anybody, when you, if somebody looked at the detail of the budget. Okay, so then, so again, similar here, you can see salaries, benefits, and non-personnel. About fifty-one percent of this fund is salary and benefits, because it is the operations fund, so there's any number of things that, such as utilities, for example, purchase services, a lot of that, that's a, utilities would be a part of purchase services, for example. And then there's some equipment and so forth related to maintaining our buildings. So, in this fund then, the cash balance at the beginning of this year was five point one million dollars. We're showing it going to two point five, and then to two point nine, but you'll see that in later this year, we're going to recommend a transfer of two and a half million dollars from this fund to the rainy day fund, and we've talked about that before as well, to increase our overall cash balance. It helps us when we sell bond issues, and certainly, it also gives us a little bit more reserves for unforeseen circumstances. Then we have, we will advertise a capital projects plan and a bus replacement plan. The capital projects plan includes all proposed expenditures that exceed ten thousand dollars, and this is for capital assets and other capital expenses. And then a bus replacement plan that's, has been a twelve-year cycle for replacement, and the plan is for five years. Then we go to debt service fund, and again, we have started with a little over six million dollar cash balance. We'll end this year a little bit up from about six point eight, and by the end of twenty-four, we're projecting this to be about six point four. So very level, as we would expect, and then you can see the graph that displays that as well. So, in summary then, our tax levies and rates, and we have the nineteen cent referendum rate, and the, notice that the operations rate dropped about a penny, and so, and then the debt service rate remains the same as does the safety referendum, so the total school tax rate is actually going to be down about a penny. And so, you know, that's a good thing, and we try very hard to manage it so that it doesn't go up, but there's nothing inherently wrong if it does go down a little bit, too. And so this year, we project it to drop a penny. And with that, you can see, here's the budget schedule. Later in the evening, we'll ask for author, permission to advertise for a hearing on these budgets, because that will be the next step to, as we just did previously, will provide opportunity for the public to comment on these budgets, and then later in October will be the final step for the school board, and that is to actually adopt the budgets. And then, we're still not finished at that point, because then we will send them off to the state, because you have to approve them, but then, and the state has to approve them as well. And so, and then the budgets go into place January first. And with that, I think I'll respond to questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. First, I'd like to just point out, our guiding principles start with how students are the center of every decision, and they end with how, the importance of fiscal responsibility. And I'm, I just want to say thank you for you and your team for all the work that you've done for multiple years, not to age you, but of how, we're in such a good place now because of the pathway that you and previous boards have done to put us there. So thank you so much for that and for your hard work of putting this together for our next year.
Thank you, and I would also like to thank Cara Colros, our director of finance, because some of you might have guessed that I didn't put this PowerPoint together. As I said earlier, I'm more of a black and white guy, not all this color, so she worked very hard, you know, a good part of the summer, into all the detail that goes behind all of this.
Thank you so much. I'll now open up for questions from the board. Any? Greg?
Yeah, trying to figure out how to ask the question, that's the tough part. You explained, I think, pretty well the transfer between the education fund to the ops fund. And if you could maybe just elaborate a bit more on that, because it looked like the education fund is down about eleven million, and then the ops fund is up, I think you said like seventeen million?
Well, we're, yeah, I think I can respond to that, but, so we start with, the twenty-four budget, of course, is increased over the twenty-three, well, the revenue and therefore the budget in twenty-four is up from twenty-three. And then the education fund, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of four percent, and between four and four and a half, I believe. So first it goes up, and then we transfer out, though, seventeen million dollars, which means it doesn't go down seventeen as compared to twenty-three, but it does go down, as you noted, if it's eleven or whatever it is. But at first, it went up as compared to last year, and then the transfer brings it back down, but it doesn't bring it down equal to the transfer.
So there were some monies from the general fund, from some years ago, that were really also allowed to be spent on operations fund kinds of things?
Exactly. What happened is, is in, beginning in nineteen, the education fund was created, and the operations fund was created, eliminated the general fund, and eliminated capital fund and bus replacement transportation. So at that point, the, so that changed what the new education fund could be used for as compared to the prior general fund, and that's the operation expenses. We're no longer permitted, but the state has continued to send the same money adjusted for inflation and so forth, as they did for the, when it was the general fund. So they didn't change, they could have said, we're going to lower, we're going to lower your money for your new education fund, and then we'll send you sixteen million dollars for your operations fund, but they didn't. And I'm not suggesting they should have, but that, they didn't do that, they just continued to send the same money, but then we had to make a transfer out of expenses that previously were okay in the general fund, but now they're no longer going to be paid out of the education fund, so that's.
And so to put that another way, too, and this is, I think, maybe why you're also, is that I believe, now, correct me, that we had originally, like I know when I first joined the board, three funds, was it three?
Well, more than that.
Did we went bigger and went, got smaller?
Yeah, so we had a general fund, a transportation fund, a bus replacement fund, a debt service fund, and then in our case, an operating referendum, and eventually, a safety referendum. And yes, and so then, when the state changed the funds, and they consolidated those funds to two funds, education fund strictly for education, and operations fund for everything from transportation to technology to building maintenance and so forth. And so that was the change. And along with that change came the necessity to transfer these operational expenses that had previously been in the general fund, but now they had to, it could no longer be paid from the general fund. And so for vast majority of the school districts in the state, the only place they could pay them, it's the only fund they had, was the operations fund. We happen to be one of fifty-some districts that have an operating referendum, and so we had a second choice. And as it turned out, we would, now we're going back to doing that transfer, because we think that that will be better and be better understood.
And I would just add that when they made that change, they also made a rule that you could transfer from the education fund to the operations fund, because they knew we were going to have expenses in the operations, and a big part of that, when you looked at that slide, fifty-one percent of the operations fund was pay and benefits, because all the custodians couldn't be paid out of the education fund, they had to be paid out of the operations fund, and our facilities folks had to be changed, really.
On everybody in this building.
Yeah, everybody that does operations, like here at the ESC, moved to that as well.
Yes, because it's, the education is only for what would, this, we would refer to as direct instructional expenses, which oftentimes you'll hear about in the classroom, and I would say in the classroom and at the school, so, but not even all the, like, the custodians are at the school, but they're not paid from there, but like the instructional assistants, for example, would also be in the classroom. But all of us are now paid out of the operations fund, or at least they're not paid, we could have, they're not paid, we're not paid out of the education fund anymore.
Okay, thank you.
I want to just clarify, because now it makes more sense than when I had first learned it. So the money that we get when it's wired to us, or however it's transferred, it already is earmarked for a specific fund. It's not, it sounds like it's not an internal thing that we do, so all the money comes, we don't divide it up. It's already earmarked for those specific funds when it comes to us?
Well, it's just, when the money comes from the state, that is based on a formula, it's a rather complicated formula, that changes every two years, at least a little bit. And so the only money we're getting from the state is for the education fund, and previous slide, I had, that's about fifty-five percent of our total, the other forty-five percent comes from, essentially from property taxes or local excise tax. And so that's the setup, so they don't send us funds, except for the, there's only one fund they send us money for, and that's the education fund.
I was just going to ask a quick question. Louise? Remind me, with the bus replacement plan, I remember what we were, you talking about it, but the high level on that piece, do you remember?
The high level.
Yeah, with the bus replacement?
So you have to have a bus replacement plan, number one, and the state, this isn't required, but the state kind of recommends, and the kind of usual formats, on a twelve-year replacement cycle. And that's not always the case, but as the bus gets old, more than twelve years, you have to have two inspections instead of one, things like that. And so, basically, we take our fleet and the total buses that we need, and divide it by twelve, and that starts to show, it's not quite that simple, but that would show like an average per year if you're going to replace them all in twelve years, so. So in our case, that translates to over two million dollars for buses a year.
Okay, that's helpful. I was trying to recruit a bus driver on Saturday, and they were asking what kind of buses we had, because they had a preference.
We have really nice buses.
Best buses in the world.
They're the best buses in the world, they're automatic, and driving the bus isn't the big challenge, we have a thorough training program for that, but we want you to like children and.
Yeah, no, I got you, I got you.
And be able to, not everybody does as well dealing with the kids. I don't know that we've actually had anybody flunk out of driver school, but unfortunately, we've left one or two behind when it came to the kids. But anyhow, that's how that works.
Yeah, I just wanted to know for sure, because they were asking me different things about the buses, and so it was going to be a selling point if we were replacing all the buses with the, you know, newest and greatest touchscreens, you know.
No, but we do regularly replace them, and so they're all, of course, maintained at the very highest level, and there is a, you know, state safety inspection that the state police do and so forth, so. There's a huge amount of effort to ensure that they are safe vehicles.
They were highly experienced, they're chauffeuring in buses for an event that I went to on Saturday, so.
We need to take each one to drive the bus event. I drove a school bus, if I can drive a school bus, you can totally drive a school.
I wasn't going to say that, but now she opened the door. We tell some people that, you know, if you can drive a big SUV, you can drive a bus, and not to minimize the bus, I mean, but we thoroughly train you to drive the bus, and you may or may not have been trained to drive the SUV. But we could have any number of our bus drivers that would share that they were concerned about driving the bus, but they now know that that's not really the issue.
And anybody watching this, in the crowd here, see Dr. O strike over there, he'll get you signed up, and we pay for everything.
Yes, we do.
That's a commercial. Thanks.
After this commercial break, we'll go back to questions from the board. Anything else? Kristen?
I just wanted to clarify more for the public that this operating budget is based on the current referendum that's already been in the work, because I know that there's been a little confusion about that, just from the public. So this, so two thousand twenty-four budget is based on the current referendum, and that's what we're using this for.
Yes, exactly.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much, Mr. McMichael.
Thank you.
We will now move on to the action portion of our evening. Permission to advertise the two thousand twenty-two budgets, the capital projects plan, the bus replacement plan, and conduct a public hearing. Mr. McMichael.
Okay, so this action item, as it notes, is, provides the opportunity for a public hearing, so that the public has the opportunity to comment on everything I just presented, the budgets, the two, the capital plan and the bus replacement plan, as well as all the budgets. And so that'll be the next step in the process, and before we get, you know, actually finish the budget process.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the permission to advertise?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any questions? Okay. All those in favor of advertising for the two thousand twenty-four budgets, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Motion carries five to zero. We'll now move on to our next item, which is adopt the preliminary determination reimbursement resolution. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you, yes, and we are recommending that the board adopt this resolution. Again, that's kind of the next step in the process for considering, to consider the sale of bonds, and as it notes, it's a preliminary determination, preliminary determination, and also a reimbursement resolution regarding one or more leases, and so we'd recommend your approval on that.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to recommend we adopt the attached preliminary determination reimbursement resolution? So moved. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Motion carries five to zero. All right, we will now move on to our last action item of the night, our seven point three resolution in form of lease for the two thousand twenty-four facility project. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you, and yes, this is the second resolution that's needed for this process, and it, as the agenda items states, it's approving the form of lease between what would be between the school corporation and the school building corporation.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the attached resolution regarding a proposed lease approving the issuance of first mortgage bonds by the Carmel Clay School Building Corporation and matters related thereto? and matters related thereto?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Questions? Okay. All those in favor of approving the resolution, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Good job, Mr. McMichael. All right, we will now move on, this is his big night, so. We'll now move on to our reports. Um, Dr. Beresford?
Okay, um, at our last meeting, uh, we presented the board with a proposal that we had gotten for a possible cellphone tower on land owned by Carmel Clay Schools. And, uh, while very, very early in the process, uh, we've received quite a bit of feedback from our community, and, uh, we've discussed the proposal with the, uh, district level administration, and, uh, we've decided, uh, not to move forward with that. So, uh, we wanna thank everyone who reached out to express their concerns about it, and, uh, it's really a very lengthy process and, uh, it, uh, we've just determined that, uh, we don't wanna move forward with it, so, uh, um, so we wanted to share that first, that's my, part of my report. And, uh, and then the second thing I wanted to share, uh, was just, uh, about the referendum, and that process is continuing, and, uh, I want everyone to pull out your calendars and select one of the following evenings to join us at our referendum town hall meetings. So they're at each, um, middle school auditorium, and, uh, the starting time for all three is six P.M. On September the twentieth, we will be at Clay Middle School. On September the twenty-first, we will be at Carmel Middle School, and on September twenty-eighth, a week later, we'll be at Creekside Middle School. So this is your opportunity to hear from more, from Roger and, uh, and me, uh, about funding and referendum specifics, as well as we'll be there to, to, uh, you know, let you ask your referendum questions and we'll give you the best answers we can find. And, uh, and whether or not you can make it to the town hall, I would appreciate everyone doing two things for me. Um, one would be to visit our website and go up to the search box and just type in referendum, and then you'll get a lot of factual information, you'll get details, accurate information, uh, you can use our tax bill calculator to learn, and, uh, the tax bill calculator, you'll be able to put in your assessed valuation and get exactly, um, what your taxes will be, but the most important information is they'll be exactly the same because we're, we're still doing the point one nine, the exact same rate that, uh, uh, we're asking just to extend that rate. And then two, um, lastly, to anyone listening, um, to this, take a moment and make sure you're registered to vote. Uh, it was great having our two, uh, high school guys, uh, really emphasize the importance of registering to vote, and, uh, we wanna make sure everybody's voice is heard, so if you have not registered to vote, uh, the time is coming up quick. Early voting starts in October. I think the last time you can, uh, register to vote is like, I think it's, uh, maybe October the tenth, I believe is that deadline. But it's, I know it's early October, so, uh, if you want your voice heard and your vote counted, you're gonna need to register if you have not done so already. And then finally, the, our bell ringer, um, is, I've been touring, uh, all over Carmel, and I've, uh, met with community groups, with homeowners associations, with PTOs, all about the referendum. And, uh, one of my favorite things when I go from place to place is to share a video of like, uh, wonderful things that are happening in Carmel Clay Schools. So tonight, I realized, we haven't played it for you. And so, uh, so as my bell ringer, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have Colleen cue up the video, and, uh, we're gonna play it for you. And, uh, really, it just shows a, a very wide, broad, uh, view of some of the exception, just exceptional work of our kids and our, our team of teachers and, and just everyone involved, and, uh, I think it's just awesome. And it was Emily Bauer's creation, so give her a big shout out for that. And, Colleen, whenever you're ready, let's roll the tape.
So obviously Carmel is the largest school in Indiana, and as Archit said, we have such a wide variety of students with so many different interests, and I think that really just allows us to explore everything we wanna explore, and that's such a positive thing in Carmel High School. But going beyond the students and the different peers we have here, I think the teachers and the mentors have played such a vital role in shaping the student I am today, but also shaping the person I am.